I'll now call the May 20th, 2024 Erlanger Board of Adjustment Special Public Hearing to Order. We will take, I will take a roll call. Mr. McVeigh.
Present.
Mr. Rolfe.
Present.
Mr. Osterhag.
Present.
And myself, Mr. Whalen, present. So we do have a quorum. You guys received a copy of the minutes for the April 22nd, 2024 Board of Adjustment Hearing. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? In seeing none, I will entertain a motion that the minutes be adopted as presented.
I'd Dr. Motion to accept.
Mr. McVeigh, do we have a second?
I second.
A second by Mr. Rolfe. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Those being none, those passed. All right. Moving on the agenda, any, are there any postponements of any scheduled business items to be made at this time? Don't think so? Mark, we're good on that? Okay. Before we get into the public hearing portion of today's meeting, I just wanted to kind of review the hearing procedures. First, we hear from PDS staff member who will present their report. Then we will hear from the applicant regarding their request. And then we will hear from the public. And in the order, we hear first from those who favor the request, second, those who oppose the request, and then third, those that are neutral to the request. Please note that this is the only time you will be able to speak. In front of me, I do have the sign-in sheet, so if your name is not on the sign-in sheet, you will not be able to speak, so please, please do so. After that, the applicant will then have an opportunity to address and clarify any questions or concerns before we close the public comments and move to discussion amongst the board members. The board may choose to ask PDS or the applicant any clarifications or any additional questions if desired, and then the board will take a vote on the matter, and finding ruling will be made. Should there be a tie in the vote, the request is considered dead. And then if the board so chooses, we can make another motion to move it along, but if not, it is dead where it stands. So that said, we will now open the public hearing, where we have two things on tonight's agenda. We're gonna do a change, switch up the second item in place of the first. I believe there is an issue with having a quorum to take a vote, so I'm gonna go ahead and open up the second item, and hopefully, we will table the item for the next meeting. I know PDS and staff, you guys will work to get that scheduled for next month's meeting. And we do have one vacancy on the board, so we'll do our best to fulfill that position to ensure that we'll be able to hear that at the next meeting. So I will go ahead and read it into the record. Let me see, first request of tonight's meeting is BOA-24-0012-3830 Narrows Road, Applicant Faith Church, Inc., per Pastor Mark Kinman. The request is, one, a conditional use request for phased parking and building expansions at an existing church; number two, variances to increase the maximum permitted front yard impervious surface area; number three, a variance to decrease the required front yard depth; number four, variances to decrease the perimeter landscaping requirements; and number five, appeals of the zoning ordinance required curb installation within the RCPS, a single-family residential zone of Erlanger Zoning Ordinance. In summary, the applicant proposes two phases of expansion. The first phase would expand an existing parking lot by installing 54 new parking spaces, and the second phase would add an 8,650 square-foot church addition with a covered entrance and install an additional 131 parking spaces. So, do we need to bring up staff at all, or can I just go ahead and entertain a motion to table the item until next month?
So, I'll just say for the record, it's probably good that we put on the record declaring the conflicts of interest that exist and the reason why we're in a position that we need to move to in the next month.
So, to the board members, do we have any conflicts of interest for this matter?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. I need to recuse myself as being a parishioner of faith church, but also that Mr. Kinman is my brother-in-law.
All right, so, Mr. McVeigh would like to recuse himself. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, my business payroll partners has a business relationship with the church, and so I will recuse myself.
Okay, so Mr. Osterhag would recuse himself as well. Shall we entertain a motion to table the event till next month's meeting?
I make motion to table the, this until the next meeting in June.
And I will second. Do we need?
Yeah, probably just cite the rationale being the two recusals not having a proper quorum.
Exactly. Due to not having a quorum, we will have to postpone and table the event till the next month's meeting. Do we need to do a roll call on that, or are we good?
You're fine.
We're good? Okay. All right, so anything else on that before we move on to the next matter? Good? Okay. So then, we will move to the second matter of the evening. All right, the second request of tonight's meeting is BOA-24-0008-412 Hallam Avenue, Applicant Brian O'Hara. The request is, one, a conditional use request for an accessory dwelling; number two, a variance requests to reduce the required rear yard setback in the RCPS Residential Compact Subdivision; and three, for the accessory dwelling unit to exceed the height of the primary structure of Erlanger Zoning Ordinance. In summary, the applicant is proposing to build a 780-square-foot detached garage with one accessory dwelling unit. The garage will be 10 feet from the rear line in common with 3227 Dixie Highway, where 25 feet is required; and three, the proposed garage and accessory dwelling unit will be 23 feet, 11 and seven-eighths inches, where the principal structure has an average height of 17 feet. First, we will have Mr. Sheets present his report as he's up here. Mr. Sheets, were the appropriate notifications made?
All right, notifications were made per KRS 100.
Thank you very much. And to the board members, are there any conflicts of interest for this matter?
No.
Nope. Being none, and to all board members, were there any site visits to declare?
No.
All right, Mr. Sheets, I will need to swear you in. If you would, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you very much. For the record, would you please state your name and address?
Cody Sheets, 918 Christ Lane, Cincinnati, Ohio.
Very good, and with PDS staff, obviously.
With, with PDS.
Yeah, sorry, you're good with PDS's address, if you know it, you're good. All right, Mr. Sheets, the floor is yours.
Yeah, so thank you for the record. My name is Cody Sheets. I would like to submit the following materials, which were sent electronically for the record. So, as the chair stated, the applicant is proposing to build a 780-square-foot detached garage with an accessory dwelling unit on the second story. The garage will be 10 feet from the rear property line in common with 3227 Dixie Highway, where 25 feet is required. And the proposed garage and accessory dwelling unit will be 23 feet, 11 and seven-eighths inches, where the principal structure has an average height of 17 feet. For the board, there are multiple requests that the board will need to take action on, each separate request. So, a little bit of history, after notifications were made in April, it was discovered that the staff had misinterpreted the ordinance, and the variance request to reduce the required side yard setback was not necessary, since the accessory structure could fulfill the side yard requirements. The combined notification and staff report from the previous month were added to reflect this. Secondly, at the April 22nd board meeting, the Board of Adjustment voted to continue the hearing for the case at the next scheduled meeting tonight, so the applicant could be present to answer any questions that the board had. So, the site in question is highlighted in turquoise here. It's approximately 0.36 acres, currently occupied by a single-family home. The surrounding area consists mostly of single-family residences. There is also a large cemetery just to what would be the north of the property. Here we have a Google Street View from November 2020, looking from Hallam Avenue, straight at the house. The proposed garage and accessory dwelling unit would be in the rear corner, if you look back of the yard. This is an eagle-eye view of the property, looking across Hallam Avenue. The site in question is gonna be highlighted in red there. The current zoning is Residential Compact Subdivision, or RCPS. The surrounding properties are primarily RCVS, RCPS, and institutional, institutional being the cemetery. The RCPS zone permits single-family residential dwellings with 25-feet rear yard setbacks. The existing land use is single-family residential, and the surrounding area is primarily single-family residential as well, but you do, again, have the institutional use of the cemetery to the north. This was a site plan, which was submitted by the applicant. The property is highlighted in red. The existing home is highlighted in blue. The proposed garage and accessory dwelling unit are highlighted in green in the corner. And it would have a 10-foot rear setback and a 3-foot side setback. And I've also highlighted an existing sewer line, which does run through the rear portion of the yard, effectively splitting the rear yard in half. These were elevations, which were submitted by the applicant. It includes vinyl siding on the exterior with fiberglass asphalt shingles on the roof. Existing trim materials will match the materials of the existing home to the best of availability and resources. And here we have two more elevations, which were submitted. These are floor plans, which the applicant submitted. First, we see the foundation, which would be 26 feet by 30 feet. Second, we have the first floor, which is where the garage would be located. That would include a garage, a mechanical room, and stairs to the accessory dwelling unit, or ADU. And finally, we have the second story, which would include a bathroom, bedroom, living room, and kitchen. So, request one is a conditional use for an ADU. ADUs are defined as residential dwellings located on the same lot as a single-family dwelling unit, either within the same building or in a detached building, in this case, a garage. There are specific standards, which do apply to ADUs. A few of those, we'll just take a look at real quick. There can only be one per lot. They may only be established on lots with size equal to or greater than 5,000 square feet. In this case, the applicant's lot is a little over 15,000 square feet, so it does fulfill that. Setbacks for detached ADUs shall confirm to setbacks for other accessory structures, which is the second variance request. The maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit is 75% of the living area of the primary dwelling, or 800 square feet, whichever is less. In this case, 800 square feet is the lesser, and the accessory dwelling unit will be smaller than that 800 square feet. They shall not exceed the height of the primary structure, that would be the second variance request. And one key point is that the property owner shall occupy either the primary dwelling unit or the ADU. So, before any conditional use request is granted, the board must find that the plan be in compliance with KRS 100. The following considerations should be made in determining if it's in compliance with KRS 100.237 states that the board shall have the power to approve or deny applications for conditional use permits, or attach necessary requirements before the request can be initiated. Staff is giving a favorable recommendation with one recommended condition, that being that the applicant provides proof within a time period not to exceed one year from the date of approval that they are residing in either the primary dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit. The applicant has expressed intent to eventually live in that. They would need to occupy it at the time of permitting. Staff does find that it would provide additional housing options in the community, as well as allow the property owner to receive a potential income stream. Requiring proof within a time period not to exceed one year after approval is consistent with KRS 100.237, which allows the board to attach time limitations to any conditional use permit. The second request is the variance to reduce the required rear yard setback from 25 feet, which is required, to 10 feet. So here we have that site plan that we saw earlier. You can see where the garage and proposed ADU would be within 10 feet, as opposed to 25 feet. So before any variance is granted, the board must find that the variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, will not alter the character of the general vicinity, will not cause a hazard, and will not allow an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulation. In making these findings, the board has three considerations, the first being if there are special circumstances, which do not generally apply to land in the vicinity or in the same zone. In this case, staff finds that yes. The applicant, the applicant's rear yard is divided in half by the sewer line that runs through it. The applicant would have to locate the garage and ADU very close to the primary structure, if they abided by the rear yard property line setbacks as well. Also, the rear property line does abut the wooded portion of a cemetery. The second consideration is whether the strict applications of the provisions of the regulation would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of their land, or create an unnecessary hardship. And this staff, in this case, staff finds that yes, it would. It is a reasonable use of land to have a detached garage located on the residence property. And finally, whether the circumstances are the result of actions of the applicant taken subsequent to the adoption of the zoning regulation. In this case, staff finds that no, the requested variance came about through the normal permitting Staff is giving a favorable recommendation. We do find that it will provide a service that's desirable, and will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of persons residing in the vicinity. Again, the sewer line divides the property in half, and it does butt up to the cemetery in the rear. The second variance is a request for the accessory dwelling unit to exceed the height of the primary structure. The proposed garage and accessory dwelling unit will be 23 feet, 11 and seven-eighths inches, where the principal structure has an average height of 17 feet. What we saw before, the accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed the height of the primary structure. Here we have graphics as to how that height is determined. And we see the Google Street View of the house again. So the house has a lineal length of 43 square, or 43 feet. 31 feet of that has a height of 16 feet tall. 12 feet has a height of 20 feet tall, which gives an average building height of 17 feet. The considerations before apply to this variance as well. And the same findings must be made. The first one, staff finds that yes, this does arise from special circumstances, which do not generally apply to land in the vicinity or zone. The property does slope downwards to the northeast. There's also an elevation drop of roughly 14 feet from the front facade of the primary structure to the rear property line, so the home does sit higher than where the garage and ADU would go. The second being whether the strict application of the provisions would deprive the applicant. In this case, again, staff finds that yes. The applicant is requesting to build an ADU, which is a conditional use within the RCPS zone. Accessory dwelling units cannot exceed the height of the primary structure, but there are no similar requirements for other accessory structures, other than being subordinate in area extent and purpose to the principal use. It has been the interpretation of the zoning administrators that the accessory structure not exceed the maximum height of the zone. So, in this case, if the applicant were just building a two-story garage, they would be okay, it's just the fact that it is an ADU on top. And this came about through the normal permitting process. Staff is giving a favorable recommendation for this as well. The variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare. And again, the property slopes downward, roughly 14 feet to the northeast, abutting the wooded portion of the cemetery. And I'd be more than happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Sheets. Are there any questions for Cody? All good. I think we're all right. Cody, I did have one question for you. Per the conditional use, it is, it's my understanding, it is requirement that the applicant live in one of the residences, whether it's the primary residence or the accessory dwelling unit permanently, not just potentially, but throughout, once it's granted and the building is built, that they do have to live in one of the residences. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That was the only, just clarification I wanted to make, that was it. So, I thank you very much. We will now hear from the applicant, Mr. O'Hara, if he's here. And while he makes his way up, I meant to do this earlier, I'm gonna do it now. I'm just gonna go through those that have signed up on the list, just if you can identify, again, if you're for, against, or neutral, so I like to keep it in order. So I do have Chris and Beth, is it Penn? Chris and Beth Penn?
They're with the church.
Oh, they're, oh, they're on the, that's the other issue.
Yes.
Okay. Are they also with the church then?
Yes.
Okay. Alan Childress?
He's with the church.
He's with the church. And then we have Mark Kinman.
He's with the church.
Are you, are you here to speak on this issue?
He's here with the church.
With the church, okay. So the only one we have to speak on this issue is the applicant, is that correct? Anybody else? All right, very good. Mr. O'Hara, welcome, and I will need to swear you in here real quick, so if you would, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. If you would, please state your name and your address.
Brian O'Hara. I live at 1233 Maddox Lane in Verona, Kentucky.
All right, very good. The floor is yours, go ahead.
I'm pretty much so open to you guys. I'm here to answer whatever. I do have, I do have pictures of other garages or detached, detached people, or, you know, buildings or whatever, that are in the neighborhood. I don't know if you guys would like to look at these. But I, and I kinda like, I'm looking at some of these things across the street, like the detached garage on this piece of paper here, and some of these buildings are over the property line, that were built like two years ago. And I'm just kinda curious on how that, how that works. I'm okay with the 3-foot setbacks and stuff like that, I just need to get my garage. As far as the living residents, I, me and my sister are the primary, pretty much are the primary caregivers of my mom. She could go anytime. I need a place to stay. I do most of my work in Cincinnati. That's an extra 45 minutes, 30 minutes in the morning, that if I need to stay somewhere, I'd like to stay at my, you know, where my garage is at, where all my, I'm a, I own a self-construction company or whatever. It would just be nice, it'd be convenient for me.
Just to get these officially entered into the record, you'd like to enter these into the record and these?
Whatever you've gotta do. I just, like I said, I just got pictures of neighboring buildings, structures, or whatever. There are setbacks on the ones that are close, that are on my street. I just, like I said, I just, they're, it's not like, my garage might be a little bit bigger, but there's other buildings or structures on my street that, I guess they've been grandfathered or built or whatever, that are even closer than what I'm asking, asking for.
I just want a note for the record, we'll enter this in as Exhibit E, as in Edward, photographs, thank you, that was. While we pass these around, does anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. O'Hara?
Mr. O'Hara, at the last meeting, we had a discussion in regards to residency there. You were saying that you will be living there, or will not be living there?
I would not be living there full-time. I mean, like I said, right now, my primary goal, my thing, is taking care of my mom. We got her on 24-hour cares, my other sibling, or brothers and sisters, each got a day, but she wants me there, that's where I stay. But when she passes, I'm gonna need a place to, you know, I'd like to have a place to stay. And that's, and then I will stay there.
Okay, that, so you have no idea when that's gonna be?
Exactly. I mean, hopefully, it's 10 years from now, but, but like I said, I mean, you just never know. I mean, she's 84 years old, I mean, she's in good health, I mean, for the most part. I mean, she's 84 years old, I mean, she's in good health, I mean, for the most part.
I think that was one of the things on the last month's meeting, we just wanted to clarify, and that's why I asked staff right before you stepped up here, that one of the requirements of, if this conditional use was granted, that you must live in one of the residences. And if not, then you're subject to fines and penalties, and that's the last thing we want to do, start fining you for something that you asked for.
Me and Cody have talked, talked about that, so, yes.
So you're comfortable with that, and you understand that?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make, just make that clear, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. O'Hara? Okay, I think that's it, unless you would like to add anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we'll now close the public comment portion of the hearing, and we'll open discussion amongst the board members. And to be clear, I think, because we have three requests in front of us, we're going to take them separate, one at a time. So if, when you're thinking this through, I'd like to make, when we do entertain a motion, we'll take the conditional use request first, and then we'll do the variance, the first variance second, and then the accessory dwelling unit to exceed the height third. So just keep that in mind when you're considering any motion you're willing to make. I think in my opinion, you know, staff, as always, did an excellent job of laying this out. You know, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't grant the conditional use. And the applicant did make it very clear, he understands what the requirements are. So again, the last thing I want to do is approve something, and then have somebody start incurring fines for that. So, he understands, I don't have any reservations, but I thought I'd just throw that out there. And again, welcome any comments you guys may have.
I'd like to forward a motion to accept the first one.
If you can, Mr. McVeigh, before we make a motion, if there's no other discussion, I will now close the discussion by the board members.
Sure.
And then I will invite you to go ahead and make your motion, please.
Yeah, I'd like to make the following motion with reference to file BOA 24008, a conditional use request for accessory dwelling unit in the, in the RCPS zone. I move to approve the conditional use permit based on the facts and consideration contained in the staff report, and based on the testimony of staff and witnesses presented at the public hearing, and find that the evidence presented by the applicant is such as to be established beyond any reasonable doubt, that the proposal use at the particular location is necessary or desirable to provide a service or facility which will contribute to the general well-being of the neighborhood, of the community, and that such use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of the persons residing or working in the vicinity or injure to the property or improvements in the vicinity.
All right, thank you very much. No conditions initially on that?
No.
All right, the motion is set, do we have a second?
I make the motion the second.
So Mr. McVeigh entered the motion, Mr. Rolfe with a second, and we'll take a roll call vote on this. Mr. McVeigh?
Aye.
Mr. Rolfe?
Aye.
Mr. Osterhag?
Aye.
And Mr. Whalen?
Aye.
So it passes on the conditional use, and now we will move to the second, which was the variance request to reduce the required rear yard setback. And I will entertain a motion from any board member on the number two. The question is, what conditions could we have on this one? It's, it's whatever conditions you would want to impose.
I don't think that we really set any conditions at this particular point. The only one we discussed was residency, which he, Mr. O'Hara, did address that.
So if you're proposing to make in favor of this second request, the variance, you can set a condition upon that variance request. And that can be, again, whatever you deem them, you would choose them to be.
Can I provide a point of clarification? So you all just now, if I heard correctly, approved the conditional use request to actually have the accessory dwelling unit as your first motion. So now the second would be related to the rear yard setback specifically. Just wanted to clarify as to which, which variance would be next for, for discussion.
So again, if you'd like to go ahead and make a motion?
Were we going to do this one or this one right here? I make a motion that, I'd like to make the following motion with reference to file number BOA 24008, variance request to reduce required yard, rear yard setback. I move to approve the variance based on the facts and considerations contained in the staff report, and based on the testimony of staff and witnesses present at the public hearing, and find that the variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, will not cause hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow an unreasonable circumvention, circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations.
All right, Mr. Rolfe has made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Osterhag has seconded the motion, and we'll go ahead and take a roll call. Mr. Rolfe?
Aye.
Mr. Osterhag?
Aye.
Mr. McVeigh?
Aye.
And Mr. Whalen?
Aye.
That has passed as well. And now we're on to the third item, which is the variance for the accessory dwelling unit to exceed the height of the primary structure of the Erlanger zoning ordinance. And I invite any board member to make a motion.
I would like to make the following motion with reference to file number BOA 24008, variance request for the accessory dwelling unit to exceed the height of the primary structure. I move to approve the variance based on the facts and considerations contained in the staff report, and based on the testimony of staff and witnesses present at the public hearing, and I will find that the variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, will not alter the essential characters of the vicinity, the vicinity will not cause a hazard or a nuisance to the public, and will not allow an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Rolfe has made a motion to approve the request, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Mr. McVeigh seconds, and we'll go ahead and take a roll call again. Mr. Rolfe?
Aye.
Mr. McVeigh?
Aye.
Mr. Osterhag?
Aye.
And Mr. Whalen?
Aye.
All three have passed. Mr. O'Hara, you got your requests. You're welcome, sir. Next up on the agenda, we have preliminary hearings. Are there any preliminary hearings to discuss?
None today.
There are none, are there any rehearing appeals to discuss?
None today, chairman.
There are none. Any board members, any new items, board items to discuss at all? We're good? I guess the only new board item is welcoming again, once again, Mr. Osterhag to the, to the board. And are there any staff items to discuss, Mr. Sheets?
Yeah, just, well, you know now, but you will have a meeting next month. There will be two items on the agenda. There's the church, which will be reheard, as well as a signed variance request for Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay, very good. I would say there are any audience items to discuss, but the audience is cleared out, Mr. Sheets being the only one left. The next meeting, as you pointed out, if it is required, June 24th, is that correct? June 24th, 2024. With that, do, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, do I have a motion?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Mr. McVeigh, do I have a second?
I second the motion.
And Mr. Rolfe seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, being none, meeting is adjourned, thank you.